My always accurate iPhone says it is 6:00 and I will call the September 27th meeting of the Bassdrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you please call the roll?
Debbie Moore?
Here.
Patrick Connell is absent. Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Greg Sherry?
Here.
Richard Gartman?
Present.
Matt Lassen?
Present.
Cheryl Lee?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum and we want to welcome our new member and look forward to working with you. We've got a lot of work to do this year.
Sounds good.
Here, roll up your sleeves.
That's why I wore shorts.
There you go. Citizen comments, item number two. At this time, three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. To address the board, please submit a fully completed request card to the board chair person prior to the beginning of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, city boards cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at this time. Instead, city boards are limited to making a statement of specific information or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Issues may be referred to the city staff for research and possible future action. It is not the intention of the City of Bassdrop to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the board to allow a member of the public to slow the performance, honesty, and/or integrity of the board as a body or any member or members of the board individually or collectively, nor any members of the city's staff. Accordingly, profane, insulting, or threatening language directed toward the board and/or any person in the board's presence will not be tolerated. That's all I had to say about that. Move on to item number three. Do we have any citizens who wish to make a comment on an item not on the agenda? Viviana, no one? Then we'll move on to announcements. Item 3A, introduction of Matt Jones, AICP Planning Director.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Jones. I'm the new director of planning here in Bassdrop. So I'll just kind of give you a brief bio where I've been, where I've come from, and a little bit about me. So I've been married for almost 10 years to my wife, Crystal. We have three little kiddos. We have a six-year-old girl, Collins, a three-year-old boy, Judge, and a two-year-old little girl, almost two-year-old little girl, Caroline. So we stay pretty busy keeping up with the kiddos most days and on the weekends. But professionally, I have about 11 years of experience in municipal government, most of in planning and economic development, so that's kind of my background. I do have a bachelor's degree in urban planning and a master's in public administration. As you also can tell, I'm AICP certified, so I have an American Certified Planner from the APA. Most recently, I served about three and a half years in the town of Argyle, which is up in the metroplex, up I-35W from here, and was there for about three and a half years as a director of community development and town manager. So I came down here to Bassdrop. I started last Wednesday, so I'm about a week into it and looking forward to working with everybody. I think we've got some unique challenges, but also a lot of opportunities here in the city for growth and for development, and I'm looking forward to being a part of shaping that future. So looking forward to working with you all and thank you very much.
Pleasure and welcome aboard.
Thanks.
And once again, you do have some sleeves you can roll up, so get busy. Items for individual consideration. Item 4A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the August 30, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission minutes. They were all sent out to us. Does anyone have any additions or corrections? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Matt seconded.
I'll second.
Second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are passed unanimously. Item 4B, consider action to appoint a commission member as its representative on the Historic Landmark Commission. Ms. Jennifer, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, so this item is for the board to, or the commission to appoint one of your members to the Historic Landmark Commission. In the ordinance for the makeup of the HLC, it requires one member to be appointed by the Planning and Zoning to represent on the commission. So the Historic Landmark Commission, some of what they do is they approve certificates of appropriateness for historic properties that have local historic designations throughout town, mostly in the downtown or town part. And then they also, one of the things we'll be looking at going forward, we just updated the ordinance that kind of defines the duties and the powers of the HLC, to also start creating some historic districts. So you'll have a district with a boundary that specific historic standards can apply to for renovations or new construction potentially. So that'll be something we're going to work on over the next couple of years. So if you guys would like to figure out who you want to appoint to the HLC, and then we'll have that member at our next meeting. And they regularly meet on the third Wednesday of the month.
Okay. Does anyone have a special interest in HLC or would like to be a member of that group?
I would, I would do it.
Okay.
If I may nominate myself.
Is there anyone else who's interested? Well, with no objection, you are it. Thank you very much.
Do you want to take a vote for this?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We should have done it to Patrick since he wasn't here.
You're right.
Thank you, Matt, for doing that. Item 4C, public hearing and consider action on the request to approve a rezoning for 0.665 acres and 1.240 acres out of building block 62, east of Water Street, located at 303 and 305 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive from S7, Single Family 7, to C1 Commercial 1, within the city limits of Bassdrop, Texas.
So the request before we deny it is to rezone two parcels on MLK from the existing Single Family 7 to Commercial 1 zoning district. The property to the east and the south of both of these two lots are both zoned commercial already. So giving you some kind of context of where we are, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive comes off, is south of 71 and comes off what is now the actual lanes of 71. Well, it comes, yeah. Actually, it comes underneath right now. In the future, there'll be TechDOTs preparing to do a new project that will create the frontage roads over the river, so eventually you'll get off and be able to exit onto MLK from that frontage road. That being said, so this is one kind of the back entrance right now into the Bassdrop County complex where they have multiple services over here. In the future, Technology Drive to the south will be connected into the Industrial Park. That's a project that the Bassdrop Economic Development Corporation has been working on. So for this, I mean, I should have had a bigger map, but for this entire southern area that includes the Bassdrop County complex and the Industrial Park, you'll have two main entrances, which will be Jackson Street and MLK. So these will be the two entrances into a fairly dense, high-use area. The property around, you have some really narrow properties that are left over from the 71 acquisition that are zoned C2, and then the properties over here are already zoned C1. And there are a few houses across the street that are in Single Family 7. On the aerial, this lot is currently vacant, and this tract has a house that I believe has been recently tax-foreclosed or purchased.
Yeah, it was purchased and was set for tax foreclosure.
There you go.
And it does basically.
Yeah, so it's a house that has not been occupied in a while. It has some stuff that needs to be cleaned up. The future land use for this area is professional services, which does allow for various size office and some commercial uses that go in conjunction with public services area, which you have with all the Bassdrop County facilities and in the Industrial Park currently.
How would that jive with C1, the professional services? It's allowed?
Yes, professional, so C1 allows a range of office up through smaller commercial uses. These tracts are not, they're 1.2 acres and about .7 acres, so they're smaller tracts. And when you get the setbacks on, you'll have to have a smaller footprint of a use. So it wouldn't, the size of the lots wouldn't allow a super-intensive use in this area.
Do they intend to leave them as two lots?
Yes. So there's actually two different owners of the two lots. They're just, they're working together to get the area comprehensively rezoned, so.
Good.
Jennifer, when will all of that be rezoned from S7 to C1? Because you're showing in the future, yeah.
So part of that will probably be looked at during our code rewrite that we're going to be undergoing over the next year, but it also will depend on what the property owners want to do. There are still some single-family houses that are in that. There are also some vacant tracts back there as well. And I suspect once 71, the back construction gets done, there probably won't be more pressure in some of this area to rezon to a commercial or general retail use.
Okay.
The land just north, that vacant spot, so not the red or the yellow, but is that an easement for a street?
It's the unopened right-of-way for Newton Street.
And it ends right there at the?
Yeah. This used to be, this also was an unopened right-of-way that was sold at some point in the past.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone want to be heard? No one signed up?
The property owners are here if you have any questions.
Does anyone have a question of the property owners? Seems pretty cut and dry.
I have some questions for understanding. So is the property owners wanting to sell the property for commercial use themselves or they're wanting to put some type of retail?
They're here to ask those questions, though. My understanding is, is that at least the larger tracts, Ms. Catherine owns several other tracts in the vicinity, so she could replat as a larger tract at some point to use with the contiguous properties. That's an option. There's no, they don't have any uses in mind at this point. It's just getting the entitlements on the property.
Do they own the property now?
Yes, they own the property.
They own the property now. So I guess I'm trying to understand what's the difference between us making a decision and just freely rezon this property versus the issue that came up with the gas station? Because they wanted to have that rezoned, but we asked them to keep it within the current zoning standard. So can you help me understand the difference?
That was a difference because of the location and they were trying to, for the gas station, they had a split-zone track, so they had two different zonings on the track and they needed to get to one zoning that would allow them to do what they wanted to do. Both zonings on the track allowed them to, for that use, the gas station use, but the development standards between the two were different. The setbacks, the height restrictions, all those things. So they had to pick one, and the neighborhood and the Planning and Zoning Commission were uncomfortable with taking some of that area out of the Form-Based Code. The front two tracts along 95 were in the Form-Based Code. So that was, that was kind of the difference. Right now, we have two kind of distinctive zoning codes, one for the downtown and one for the rest of town. So it was kind of that conflict between those two zoning codes, and that's something that as we go through our code rewrite will be cleared up. We won't have kind of two codes, we'll have one zoning code, so that conflict won't be there in the future. So this is going, this is in our standard zoning code. Oh, I went the wrong way. Since this is south of 71, this is outside of the Form-Based Code area, so these are our standard zoning designations of single-family or Commercial 1, Commercial 2, those different. So if you want to go from a single-family use, you need to rezon to an office or a commercial use.
Jennifer, my question is, when I drove down that road today, the road itself is not capable of handling traffic for C1. Will the infrastructure be upgraded if the zoning is changed?
Well, eventually the infrastructure will be.
It's going to be changed for that?
Because right now, Martin Luther King ends down here, and then Technology Drive picks up further down. The intent is that Technology Drive will connect all the way up to Martin Luther King, so that'll be, right now, there's only one entrance in and out of the Industrial Park. So that'll be the second entrance in and out of the Industrial Park. And this will be the second entrance, because the Bassdrop County has also got plans to expand their complex in that area, so you're going to have two entrances into this entire area, which will be Jackson Street and Martin Luther King Street.
What level of street is that going to be going in there? How wide is it? Is it going to be just a collector or major arterial? What's MLK slated to eventually become when the MLK and Technology combine?
Currently, it's just a 50-foot collector, but I think we'll probably want to reevaluate that as, as the infrastructure upgrades. And part of it also is in response to TechDOT's plans, which they're, that project should get started probably in about May or June of next year to do the second phase of the 71 improvements, which will be the frontage roads over the river.
There are no other questions. I will, at this time, close the public hearing. Commissioners, what are your thoughts? And this comports with our, our plan.
Yeah.
Comprehensive plan. Thank you very much. One of those seeing moments that come more often these days.
Yeah. Yeah, they have professional services and then industrial, and then public, public use is blue is over here where the county complex is.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Mayor Richard?
Second.
Second.
Back to my Matt. Will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Richard Gartman?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
And I will be forwarded to the October 9th City Council Meeting for a public hearing and first ordinance reading.
In command. At this time, we will, we will adjourn our regular meeting and convene into workshop session, workshop session 5A, update on building Bassdrop.
So just a quick update on our building Bassdrop initiative and the moratorium specifically. So currently, we've set aside every Tuesday to hold pre-application meetings, so we can meet with developers or property owners that wish to change something on their property that needs to either have an exception or an exemption through the moratorium process. So we've been holding six pre-application meetings every Tuesday, and then if we need to, going and doing site visits, and that's the city engineer, the Public Works Director, and planning, me. So we've, we're, we've been keeping pretty busy with that. We do at least six every week. On nine, at 9:00 AM on, I like, I put the time, not the date. 9:00 AM on Thursdays, we have a developer and citizen meeting, standing meeting, that the mayor attends, and we've had some meetings, some weeks we've had some people, some we've just had one. But it's been a good opportunity to talk to people about what the moratorium entails and how the process has been going. And we also held the first open house on the building Bassdrop initiative on September 18th at the Convention Center, and there were approximately about 75 attendees of the public, so it was pretty well attended. We had a lot of good conversations and questions being asked.
I think, I think what you're doing is very important in addition to the open houses, because I think the more information we get out to the public, the more they understand it, and the more they will understand why we're doing it and why it's good for the city. So kudos to everybody involved.
And this is just the first of several meetings we'll be having this fall, so. And then just some metrics that we've been providing to show that we still are, we still are busy, we still are processing things that, as long as they're addressing drainage or projects that were already in process. We've issued 40 building permits, 110 trade permits, since the moratorium went into effect. We've had 13 exception letters issued for projects that were already ongoing or have had no impact to drainage. We've had three exemption applications, but two have gone through the process already at council and have gotten approved. We'll have a third one go to the next council meeting. We've held 23 of our pre-submission, pre-application meetings on Tuesday, and we have seven scheduled for upcoming.
Jennifer, what's the difference between a trade permit and a building permit?
So a building permit is actually when you're doing a new building or a remodel and you're changing structural elements. A trade permit is a plumbing permit or an electrical permit when your trade person comes in to pull that permit to go do the work associated with. So if you're putting in a new water heater, that's just a trade permit. The plumber comes in, gets it, installs the water heater. But if you're building in, addition to your bathroom, your house or a new bathroom, that'll be a building permit, and your plumber would still have to come in and get a trade permit. Any other questions?
Question about the building Bassdrop. The, you said first of seven. Are you saying there's going to be seven open houses?
Well, actually, I'll let Jordan talk about that in her presentation, because they have the schedule for the next meetings that are coming up, so.
And out of the 75 attendees, did you have, or do you guys have any idea of how many of those were developers versus people in the community? Were you able to break that down any kind of way?
I think we do have that breakdown. I don't have it. I'll have to get with our consultants that were, that keeping the list for us, or Sarah O'Brien, I think, actually has that breakdown, but I can get that for you. But we did have a lot of people from different, we had developers that I talked to and then just citizens that were interested in what was going on, and there was a lot, and for other people in the city that don't do the development, there was a lot of people they hadn't ever talked to before, too. So it was a lot of good conversation.
I've talked to a few people, not angry people, but people who were wanting to do projects, but, you know, obviously haven't brought them in because they just feel they wouldn't be approved, they haven't quite dared set a Monday or Thursday meeting, whatever those pre-planning meetings are. But, you know, they kind of mentioned, well, I'm building a new roof, so it's not going to pass anyway. And I know there's the idea of getting, you know, an engineer to kind of say this building is runoff-neutral or, and as talking to it, you know, ideas came up, well, you know, does rainwater collection count? Does building a berm on the property for a little bit of water retention? You know, a few ideas like this, and of course, I don't really know yes or no, but is there a list we could, I mean, I would assume those things would help if an engineer were looking at it, but are there a list of things that people could add to their project currently that you would say, look, you still need an engineer to stamp this, but here are some ideas that would help your project get, or an engineer to stamp or approve it and get the project going?
And that's something we're working on right now, that we've been working on in our Tuesday meetings, is kind of trying to create some basic criteria and basic, you know, looking at it, trying to figure out the different project levels in town. Trey Jobe and Jerry Palladie and I have been working on that list, so we're hoping to have that soon. And we do have those discussions during those pre-application meetings of different ideas that people can have. But if it's just you're putting a new roof on your house, that's a no-impact project.
Yeah.
Yeah, new roof, yeah. So it's, so some things like fences could be a problem if you're putting in a drainage easement, but if it's an open fence and it's not, those are no-impact projects, so we're, there are different options, and we do work through those in the meetings, but we are trying to create a list going forward of some ideas for the engineers and for citizens.
Anything else for Jennifer on this? If not, then we will move on to item 5B, update from Simple City Design regarding the DNA of downtown and code analysis.
And I will turn it over to Jordan. She is with Simple City Design.
Thank you. Hi, Commissioners. I'm Jordan Feldman.
Can you speak into the microphone so the folks at home can hear? Could you have a soft voice?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm Jordan Feldman. I'm with Simple City Design. Unfortunately, Matt Lewis, who presented at the last PNC, could not be here today, and I'm giving the update on his behalf. So a few weeks ago, we submitted the downtown DNA analysis to staff, and last week, we received comments back from staff, and next week, next Wednesday, October 3rd, we'll be resubmitting the second draft. The second draft will include more local history and local stories, as well as further assessment based on what staff comments said. So to complete the DNA analysis, we studied the built environment of downtown, analyzing aspects like its streets, buildings, sidewalks, and the function they have in creating a complete neighborhood and a complete street. This is a starting point into implementing these functions on a city-wide scale in new growth areas to guide the city towards resilience for future generations and current generations. Our team physically and digitally studied the downtown and organized the analysis into three character areas that were first established in the Form-Based Code. These character areas were further broken down, sorry, broken down by neighborhood patterns, public frontage, and private frontage. As you can see, this is an example of what our team used to analyze the streets. This is an example of various frontage types that are seen in many downtown, historic downtown areas. They have effects on the public realm and the comfort level of the pedestrian as they walk down the sidewalks. This, this determines whether a pedestrian is going to linger, if they're going to pass through, or if they're going to avoid. We showed this to you last time. This is an example of transect development. It shows organic transitioning from a dense downtown to a rural environment. The city's comprehensive plan supports this kind of transitional development, and this is what we use to guide our analysis. So in addition to the DNA analysis, we have also done a code analysis that we submitted to the city last week, and we're awaiting review. These are some of the questions that we used in creating the code analysis, and we will go into this more extensively on the next update after we get staff review back. This is a picture of the current zoning map, and this is what we will use for our further analysis of combining zoning districts or creating new zoning districts. So our, we have some important dates coming up. The first is October 18th is Get to Know Your City. It's a public open house where we will discuss the characteristics of the DNA findings and their function and the success of the downtown. So that is October 18th, and it's going to be all day. November 29th and 30th is our Design Rodeo. This is a charrette-style meeting where we will engage the public and see how their vision of the city aligns with what we found in the DNA analysis and the code analysis. And then we will also have another Design Rodeo on December 12th and 13th. So the important dates are October 18th, Public House Meeting, Get to Know Your City, and November 29th and 30th, the First Design Rodeo, and December 12th and 13th, the Second Design Rodeo. And we will give more information as the meetings come closer. I can take any questions at this time, and anything that I can't answer, I will relay to Matt, and we will get those answers to you.
Since I wasn't around when we did the original comprehensive plan, it was done before I got involved, it almost sounds like we're going back and redoing the comprehensive plan?
No. No, we are using the comprehensive plan to inform changes in codes later on down the road, so we are not changing the comp plan.
Okay.
Some of this was addressed when we were doing the Form-Based Codes. I mean, we looked at windows and measurements and building heights and the like, when we were deciding where the Form-Based Code would start and where it would stop and where we had transitions and, and how we wanted to keep the city looking the way it did. We wanted to be able to, if some, God forbid, something happened, we'd be able to rebuild the city the way it looks now. In some places, we couldn't unless things were changed, so we're getting deeper into that. Just have a couple of questions. One was on the event dates. Will that be at the Convention Center, you think?
I will, I'll update you on that.
Okay, so to be determined. And this is just a very simple question, and it sounds primary, but when people ask me, and I know that you have a question here, what is the downtown DNA? Can you give me a definition of that? Because when we think of DNA, we think of all different things, so tell me what the real definition is.
So, tell me what the real definition is that I can tell people that we are referring to in this.
Well, I can give you a description. It's not like a definition. It's all of the aspects within the old historic downtown area that have provided a function that creates like a walkable, usable environment for pedestrians and cars and hopefully bikes.
Okay.
And that's in -- so, that's like a short version.
Right, thank you.
Welcome.
You keep using the term downtown. Are we looking at just the downtown area, or are we looking at all of Bastrop on this?
Right now, we are analyzing the downtown to see what, within the downtown, was successful in creating this functioning environment and what we can use outside of the downtown in new growth areas to recreate this function. Did that make sense?
Yeah, so, what you're saying is understand what exists in the downtown, and then how do we, when we do new development, how can we replicate that in new development?
Correct, yes.
Anyone else?
Yes, my mind just went blank.
You're too young for that.
I know, too much in my brain. So, I talked to Matt at the convention center, and he kind of gave me a better understanding of what the role of Simple Cities is in extracting the DNA. So, I don't know if you can clarify this, or if it might be a question for another meeting or for you to take back with Matt, but after I thought about our conversation, his explanation to me was that, like you stated, you basically took out a lot of different areas of downtown, and then the recommendation will come back to us when we relook at the ordinance to see how we can maybe tweak the ordinance based on the DNA that you guys are going to provide back to us. So, then after I thought about it, are you guys measuring also the widths of the property in downtown Bastrop so that when we tweak our ordinance, we might base it based on those widths? And the reason I ask that is because if we're going to be using this DNA to restructure our ordinance for new development, I'm sure you guys are well aware of the new developments. The houses are stacked on top of each other, literally, and our downtown is not. And that, I just started wondering how that's going to impact the desire to develop new homes because most of what you see now is stacked. So, are we going to, I think that's something that we need to consider definitely when it comes time because I was telling Matt, I can put a whole new house in my backyard. So, are we going to put restrictions on new developers to where that's going to be allowed or not allowed when we talk about using the DNA? Because downtown is very different from what's in these developments that we see popping up. And then I also was interested in finding out, in your assessing our city, if you guys are also going to be reporting on things that you see are problematic, as well as what's working well for the city.
Yes, we will be doing that because it is, there are aspects within downtown that we would not want to carry on. For example, the live oak trees, as street trees, that's not something that is sustainable in the long run because it breaks up sidewalks. So, that is just one aspect, and we will voice those. Also, Matt could probably speak to your first question better, but one thing that is unique about the neighborhood district in downtown is that there are multiple types of lots and sizes of lots. And the new developments that are coming in, they are not as intermixed, and you don't get varying lot sizes. So, that is something that we could carry on into new development where you reproduce the ability to have multiple different lot sizes. So, that is one aspect.
And how do you think that would impact the desire to develop? Because again, for most of the new developments that are coming up, it's just, you know, pretty standard across the board. There's all but five feet between you and the neighbor's house. Well, and my concern is, will that deter then developers if we are telling them they have to build all these different sizes?
Yes, I understand your concern, and I can't completely speak to that, but there are different types of developers. So, one developer that says no, and the next one might say yes. So, I think that is how it's -- so, but Matt could speak to that better.
Good question. Anybody else?
I was just looking at the schedule on the back page. Are we pretty much on task with that timeline as far as the events that are laid out month to month?
What are you looking at?
The last page, the authentic Bastrop schedule.
Okay, yes, we're on schedule.
Based on that schedule, it said that you've got an analysis report that was to the city by the end of September. Is there a chance that Planning and Zoning is going to get a chance to see that? That may be more for staff. Will we get a chance to see that?
Yes, you'll get a chance to see that eventually, but right now, it's in staff review. We literally have had it for a week, so. And council's also very interested in all this, so we need to get it out kind of at the same time, but staff's still under review on all of these things, so.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item 5C, discussion on the FY19 Budget Book Strategic Vision.
So, I just included this in the packet because this is something that staff and the city manager and council have been working on a lot, especially our core cabinet team with the city manager, getting the budget ready to go. We've got a lot of projects citywide that are underway for the next year and the next five years. And so, just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of what was in that strategic vision for the budget and for the future fiscal year, and just to kind of go over some basics of it. So, the document I attached contains the progress of the comprehensive plan goals and objectives because the budget does tie back to our comprehensive plan. That is the guiding vision document for the city. It also includes the fiscal year 2018 achievements because that's one of those things that you want to celebrate, what we did get done before we're talking about all the new things we're going to do for the next year. And then the next section was the fiscal year 2019 organizational work plan. Last year, council adopted the first work plan that really defined specific goals and programs that different departments were working on and who was responsible for those. And then the document also had the budget calendar, which this got adopted at the last council meeting. And then also, it describes the annual budget process if you haven't followed that before. So, some of the things I just wanted to point out that were in this document is the specific planning department work plan items that were included in this because there were quite a few. So, things that we will be working on for the next year. One is obtain certified local government designation, and this is a program with the Texas State Historical Commission. So, and this is something that once we get this status, we'll be able to apply for grant funding through the state. Also, we're going to continue to improve our communications with the development community. This is something we started last year, and we're going to continue to work with our social media and our communications department and with making sure our development processes are well-defined and understandable, and this code rewrite will help that as well. We also are working on creating and adopting a formal addressing policy. And there were some miscommunications. People thought we were going to go back and readdress the rest of town. That's not what we're doing. We're just creating and adopting a policy to make sure we consistently address new subdivisions and new lots consistently going forward. It really came to light when I started replacing the street signs that we don't have very clear delineations on, you know, the 100 block, the 200 block. So, this will help going forward to not have those confusions and keep the 911 addressing clear. One thing we've been working on, I brought to you, I think, guys, back in May, which I'm hoping to bring back to you maybe next month, is our food truck ordinance. And staff has been working and talking about it with other departments. We've talked about rolling this out as potentially a pilot project so we can roll it out, let the community try it for a while, and then at the end of a period, figure out, you know, what parts are working, what isn't working, and then finalize the ordinance and hopefully get that adopted next year. We're also, obviously, we're updating our zoning and sign ordinances to be fiscally sustainable, and that's part of really the DNA of downtown is, you know, the downtown has existed for over 100 years. It's obviously has been sustainable. So, we want to make sure we're retaining those elements that have made historic downtown sustainable for the long term and also geographically sensitive and in alignment with the comprehensive plan. We know we have many geographies just within our very small town that we have to be sensitive to, and especially when you take into context our drainage concerns. We're also going to be updating our technical criteria manuals, including construction standards, and then reviewing modifications to the subdivision ordinance and development process to align with the updated codes and comprehensive plan. So, we're kind of going to do this in two phases, the zoning and the signs, and then the subdivision, and hopefully we'll get it so it's not 151 pages, Richard. That's our goal, and to be a little more streamlined than our current draft. But we still will be working on, from the adopted ordinance and the draft that you guys have already worked on, is our baseline for starting that process. Development annexation plan and a corresponding development plan. This is one that, as we continue to grow, we need to be focused on what, where are areas for opportunity for annexation, and as new developments come in, what land needs to be developed in the city limits. And there are some rules with the state that we have to make sure we're adhering to in that process.
Would that annexation plan include timelines as to what we're thinking of bringing in?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, we need, one of the things that has been talked about at council lately is adopting an interlocal agreement with the county within our ETJ. With a lot of times, we also refer to it as our 1445. Cities and counties are supposed to have an agreement that defines who's doing what roles within the ETJ and whose review authority. Currently, we've been, the city has our statutory ETJ, which is our one mile that we have by right from our size, and then we have the voluntary ETJ that came in in the 80s, and we've broken that into two areas. There's Area A that the city oversees and then Area B that the county oversees. So, that interlocal agreement establishes that split and who's reviewing what in that process. We're also going to be developing a comprehensive internal records management system and policies for our zoning, planning and zoning files. So, this is something that's an undertaking we've, we're an old city, we've got a lot of files, and we've got to try to modernize our file system and also get that into a digital format. So, we're not playing a hunting game through lots of different files at the city. And so, we have, I believe, nine work plan items just for the planning department in that list, and there's many others, if you read, that the planning department will be assisting on. And additionally, we are also, with Allison, the GIS component of the city, so we will be working with other departments on supporting them on mapping and digital data gathering. So, you have any questions on this document? It was just kind of an FYI, make sure you knew it was out there. Some of you come to council and look at the agendas a lot more.
Any questions?
Yeah, what does ETJ stand for?
Sorry, extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Ah, I knew that had to be in there somewhere.
Yes, we like our acronyms in the planning department. So, every city, depending on your size, is allowed a certain area, be it a half-mile, mile, three-and-a-half miles, it depends on your size. But Bastrop is unique in that we have a voluntary ETJ with, that landowners actually opted to be in our ETJ, and a lot of that property actually goes all the way to the Travis County line. So, it's, I believe, 154.7 square miles, which...
And what does that mean to the city? That the ETJ, what does it allow us to do?
ETJ, so...
And prevent others from doing?
So, the main thing that we can control in that area is subdivision authority. So, anyone that wants to subdivide their land into separate parcels has to do it according to our, right now, our rules in the statutory or Area A, and then the county's rules in Area B.
I did notice on your timeline, on your timelines in there, that you're showing the codes and stuff being finished either, well, to mid-March of next year or December of next year. So, we've got some hard dates to move on.
So, some things will happen sooner than others, but for the entire process, because we're not, we're looking at a holistic update. We're talking zoning, signs, subdivision, building codes, and then also making sure all of our technical manuals. So, the stuff that people don't usually see, it's more on the construction side or the subdivision construction side, making sure those are up to date, and then also all of our forms and things that we use internally. So, some of the stuff will come earlier, and then some of it will be. And also, the goal is to have something that you don't necessarily have to read every page of the code to understand, but you can pick up a guide and know what process you need to do. So, easy-to-read handouts, things like that. So, some things will get done earlier, and then some of those other items will come in later.
Am I correct that part of the moratorium, during the moratorium, we're going to be doing a comprehensive drainage study?
Mm-hmm. So, we're working with several different consultants to do, because half did a study on Gill's Branch.
Right.
And so, they're going to do some more in-depth analysis on that study. And I don't know where they are currently on that, in that process.
That's critical.
But through our codes, drainage will be addressed at each stage. That's kind of where we, there's some holes between the stages where drainage isn't always addressed as well as it should be, so.
Anybody else? With that, we will adjourn the workshop session, go back into regular business, updates, individual requests for planning and zoning. Commissioners, for particular items to be listed on future agendas. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to see next time that was not on this time, or questions that you have for Jennifer that she can answer next month? Okay.
Or for Matt, you can ask him things, too.
There's just kind of one item, and it's, you gave us a little bit of it here today with, here's the number of permits, here's the number of applications. I'd kind of like to see a little more detail on that to know how the zoning and planning that we're dealing with today, how that is impacting it. Obviously, as we go through this DNA process, it's going to evolve and change. One of the items I know that we're responsible for is rewriting the comprehensive plan, which we haven't done, so I guess...
We're not rewriting.
Reviewing it, excuse me.
We're not going to rewrite that, Cyber.
Reviewing it. So, that's as part of the DNA that'll get compreh- picked up there.
And I would imagine during this process, we probably will have to do some level of review on the comprehensive plan to make sure that the new zoning districts are reflected properly within the future land use. Because if, when you read the future land use, it refers to certain zoning districts that would be appropriate, so we're definitely going to have to at least make sure that those, the comprehensive plan reflects which zoning districts are appropriate as we change those zoning district names or categories.
Anyone else? Move on to item 7. Do I entertain a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Good job, everybody, and welcome aboard all our new members.
We'll have a couple more new members starting next meeting, so.